I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve today's agenda?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the minutes from July 3rd and July 8th.
Move to approve.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the claims for payment.
I'll move to approve claims for payment of July 10th, 2019.
I will second it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Utility permits and secondary roads. Taylor was not able to be here today. He is...
Driving around with FEMA.
Yes, driving around with FEMA, so we'll just have to...
So they're on it.
Yeah.
Slowly, very slowly.
Really? Okay.
I have a utility permit. Permit 71019. Motion to approve Harden County utility permit application by Midland Power Company for the purpose of boring Highway D-55 into the property at 22596 Highway D-55 located in Section 2 of Grant Township.
Okay, I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Tom Schutz. Morning, Tom.
Good morning. How are you doing?
Doing well.
Good.
Thank you.
We had talked a few weeks ago about seeing if we could improve what we were paying on the life insurance the county provides for the employees and then also looking at possibly short-term disability. And then I also added in, just for discussion purposes, I've got some numbers as well on long-term disability. So I just wanted to present to you our findings today. We talked with, received proposals from several carriers and narrowed it down to negotiate what we think is a very good package with Lincoln Financial Group. I just wanted to go over through those and talk about some of the highlights if I could. So if you look on the right side of your folder, what I've done is I put them in order. So right now, the county offers through Voya Life Insurance Company. The county pays for $10,000 of coverage on each full-time employee and then also offers, or has offered, I don't think that there's been open enrollment for some time, but employees have the opportunity to buy additional coverage. And so the first two sheets are really on the life and the voluntary life. And so it's, we've matched the same $10,000 if you look at the first one. And basically, the annual premium would be about $1,550 less. Same coverage. It also does carry with it, this is the easiest of the three, it does carry with it a three-year rate guarantee. So it would be this cost and this rate until July 1 or August 1, whenever it's effective, of 2022.
Okay.
So, some nice savings on basically keeping the same benefit from the perspective of the employees. On the next page is the voluntary life, which I think is, voluntary life basically for those employees who feel that they have the need, it gives them the opportunity to buy additional coverage. And they're able to do it through payroll deduction. And so I just put a side-by-side comparison because I think there are some things that could be significant to employees. First of all, the way that voluntary life works, it's a term policy, it's age-rated. So they break it into age brackets and you have a, as a lot of things in life, as you get older, it gets more expensive. And so this isn't any different in that regard. But I think there's a couple of significant things, a couple of terms you'll use, hear me think about and talk about. And I think one of the most significant is guaranteed issue. What guaranteed issue means is that if I fill out the paperwork, I get the coverage, I'm not subject to any underwriting, the insurance company will issue the policy. And so, just, so basically, they both offer coverage for employees. You can also buy coverage on a spouse if you have coverage on the employee, has coverage on himself or herself, and you can also buy coverage on dependents. And so, they're pretty similar for employees. Under both plans, you can do from $10,000 up to $500,000 of coverage in increments of $10,000 of coverage. There is a maximum of five times salary. The spouses, it's with Voya, it's $10,000 to $100,000, with Lincoln it's $5,000 to Currently, you could buy the same amount on a spouse, you can buy on an employee, but with Lincoln Financial, it's a more traditional, what we see today, it's limited to 50% of coverage. But here's where I think it's interesting, could be a real value to employees. So the guaranteed issue amount for currently is $100,000. And that only applies if you purchase coverage when you first become an employee and become eligible for benefits with the county. In any subsequent year, if during your open enrollment, if you want to buy additional coverage, it's always subject to underwriting. With Lincoln Financial, the guaranteed issue amount is $150,000. And, what they will do in a transition is they will open up an open enrollment period, so every employee would have the opportunity to buy up to $150,000 of coverage guaranteed issue at this time. And then going forward, new employees would have that when they become first eligible. One of the other things we like about the Lincoln program is each year during open enrollment, employees can purchase an additional $10,000 or $20,000 of coverage on a guaranteed issue basis. So they can continue to increase their coverage guaranteed issue. If they want more than $20,000, then the additional would be subject to underwriting. But it's, we found it to be a really nice feature, we've used that with, we have a number of counties that are doing that. With spouses, there's a typo there, it's not $30, it's $30,000 if you look on the right side. So when, when an employee first, when you have a new employee, they have guaranteed issue amount on themselves. And they also have a guaranteed issue amount on his or her spouse, which is $30,000. And then in subsequent years, you can increase that by $10,000 up to the guaranteed issue amounts. And then dependent coverage is really something you typically, you can buy on kids, one price fits however many kids you have, and typically it covers them up to age 19 unless they continue as a full-time student. Right now, the option is $10,000 and it's $2 a month to cover however many kids you have, whether you have one or 10. And the Lincoln Financial gives choices, you can do it in $2,500 increments, but the cost is still basically the same. So I think there's some nice features relative to employees on the voluntary life. And I think, one of the things I don't think we've done is have a regular open enrollment on, on the life insurance each year. And so we would want to certainly have a conversation about whether that made sense, that would make this more valuable, of course. Questions on the life so far?
I don't think so. Jessica?
If you migrated over to Lincoln from Voya, would there be the guaranteed acceptance of those that have already been on?
They would just carry over.
So they wouldn't have to go through underwriting again?
No, no, whatever amounts currently exist on the voluntary side would just, would just roll over to Lincoln Financial. And I think I mentioned, and I put in here, but the rates are identical. So the rates that are currently being paid to Voya would be the same with Lincoln Financial.
Okay.
So they just simply matched the rates, added the guaranteed issue option for the first time, and then they have the built-in guarantee issue in subsequent years.
And, and then this just came up with something with Tina, are the rates different for tobacco?
Yes.
Okay, and then is there enrollment, is that the disclosure, or is it via underwriting, or how is that determined? Because actually on Voya, it's, yeah, it's not, it's not determined on the application, that's why I was...
This, they would mark it on the application, you would mark tobacco or not tobacco.
Okay.
Yeah. Good questions. And so I put the rates in here as well, just so you have them, you could verify that they're the same.
All right, good.
Okay?
Could the employee, if they chose to take another job, could they take this insurance with them and pay the full amount?
Yes, they take, they, you can, it's, you can take it with you at the same rate. So basically what happens, instead of having payroll deduction to pay the premium, you would have to change it so that it's billed to you at your home. Yep?
All right.
Any other questions on that?
I don't think so.
So I don't mean to rush, but I know you've got a long agenda today, so I want to go through and at least introduce it to you.
You're fine. You're the, you're the long agenda.
I'm the long agenda? That's what everybody tells me, everywhere I go. So let's go to the short-term disability. So, short-term disability is, it's, it's this form right here. So, short-term disability, so typically what you're talking about is you have something that occurs, you can't work, and it's intended to be short-term, and so typically, those benefits don't last more than a six-month time period is the maximum. Once in a while, you can get them a little longer, but that's a pretty similar. And so, a couple of things you think about with short-term disability is when benefits become payable. And so, you'll see on this sheet, at the very top, it says benefit plan, and you'll see some funny-looking numbers there. So let's just take the first one where it says 1826. So what that means is that benefits would be payable from the first day if the disability results from an accident, from the eighth day if they result from an illness, and benefits would be payable for 26 weeks. So the first number is, when does it start paying for an accident? The second number is, when does it start paying for an illness? And the third number is, how long would benefits be payable? And so, I've loaded a lot of information on this one sheet, but I want to point out the first, you see the first two columns up above, it says Harden County paid? And then on the third column, it says employee paid, or it'd be like a voluntary, because I wanted to show you all of those options. And so, basically, the first two columns, the only difference is, is really when benefits are paid. And so, the first one, it's first-day accident, the second column, it's eighth-day accident. And then the paid period. So the benefit that it would include would be 60% of salary, up to a maximum weekly benefit of $1,000. On an employer or Harden County paid plan, there's no what we call pre-existing conditions. So it's frequent on these policies, they don't do any underwriting, and so a lot of times they'll have a pre-existing condition, so they'll, I've got a long-term disability, we'll talk about it, but a lot of times they'll go back three months prior to your effective date and said, "Did you have anything going on?" And they're not going to pay for any disability related to that condition for the first year that you're on the plan. But these have no, so you come on with no limitations. And so, which is a little bit unusual on short-term disability. And then you can see the rates, the rate is in the term of $10 of weekly benefit, and so the 1826 is just over 47 cents, the 8825 is just shy of 45 cents. And so I've got the monthly premium for each, the annual premium, so $32,000 for one, about $30,500 for the other, and those rates are guaranteed for two years. I will tell you, short-term disability is a pretty expensive benefit. And it's pretty expensive because it tends to have, it tends to have a higher claim. And so I think, kind of the question here that I don't know that I, that I think we would want to meld into this conversation is, how does this fit with your sick leave, your PTO? Can you accumulate? Does it make sense to have a short-term, how does it connect with those two? And I think that may require a little deeper discussion than we've had as it relates to the short-term. Because short-term disability is, is connected to non-work-related disabilities. If it's work-related, it's going to go into your work comp, and this plan is not going to pay. And then what I did on the right side, employee paid, that just, that would be, that's similar to what we talked about on the voluntary life or the option, is you could offer short-term disability, make it available if, if an employee wanted to purchase the coverage, they could do so at their cost, but they would be able to do it at, based on payroll deduction. And so, you can see, when you do it, two things, on a voluntary basis, from a risk-protection standpoint, insurance company will make some adjustments. So in this instance, you can see the first two weeks of a disability, so 15 days, the benefits aren't going to be payable. So they push that back a little bit, and then it pays for 24 weeks. It does have a pre-X. You see that 1212? What that means is, is they would go back 12 months prior to the effective date, and if there was anything you were being treated for in those 12 months, then any disability that related to that treatment in the first 12 months of, that they were, that individuals on the plan, is not going to be covered. So why do they do that on a voluntary and not on an employer paid? Because on employer paid, you have everybody, you're paying premium on everybody, you're not going to get the same participation, and so we call it adverse selection. You're more likely to get a higher percentage of people that are more likely to have claims, that are going to have the protection. So you can see the rate jumps up quite a bit. And then I just put a note at the bottom, if we did it on a voluntary basis, we would have to have at least, in order to install the plan, we would have to have at least 16 employees take the coverage on a voluntary basis.
Is that just to start with, or what if you have like 18 employees and then two drop?
Typically, if you stay close to that minimum in the subsequent years, typically, they'll maintain the coverage. But if we drop down to maybe eight or nine...
Okay, then they'll...
Then they may come in and say, hey, we're not, unless we get back up to that minimum, they won't just do it on the spot. They'll say at the next renewal, if we don't get back up to that minimum, then we're...
Might lose it.
We're, we're not going to continue with the coverage.
Yeah. Okay.
I did one other thing that we didn't talk about, and, but I kind of wanted to bring it into the conversation because I think it may make some sense. So I also, I have a lot of situations like this where we look at short-term disability coverage. And short-term disability coverage tends to be a little more popular. People think more short-term, I mean, that's kind of how we all think about. And so, and so, but it's much more expensive. And nobody really thinks about long-term disability, which frankly is a bigger risk to most people. If I'm disabled for a long period of time, lose my ability to earn a wage, that's a problem. And so, I did put some numbers together on a long-term disability plan, so it could match up with a short-term. And so, the way the long-term disability works, it's a monthly benefit. And so, basically, it pays, would replace 60% of an employee's salary. Once again, this is for non-work-related. Work-related is always, on a disability standpoint, work-related is always going to be your workers' comp. So it's 60% of salary to a maximum monthly benefit of $4,000 a month. I have asked to see if we can get that maximum bumped up to $5,000, I haven't heard back. It has a 180-day or a six-month waiting period. That means the first six months of disability, the plan pays nothing. So an employee would have to cover that. Maybe you cover it with a short-term disability, maybe, maybe a sick leave or a paid time-off program. You can also reduce that, the typical next step below would be 90 days. The rate, of course, will go up, but that's another way to do that. And then it pays benefits to the later of age 65 or your normal social security retirement age. So for some people, that, you know, it's moved up, depending upon your date of birth, 66, 67, 68 is the, the normal social security retirement age. The only, the only limitation to that is disabilities that are tied to mental nervous conditions or substance abuse, it only pays for 24 months. And they have those listed in the policy, what falls into those categories. It does have a pre-X, so when you first are eligible, if you had a claim, they would look back three months prior to your initial date. So let me just say, let's just say for example, I'll give you an example, what's that mean? So let's say I signed up for this, and let's say I had high blood pressure. So if the first 12 months I'm on the plan, I have a disability that is connected with my high blood pressure, the plan's not going to pay benefits on that condition, it's going to pay on anything else, something else that occurs that I'm disabled. Once I get past that first year on the plan, there are no pre-existing limitations, it's just tied to initial enrollment in the plan. Interestingly enough, again, this was set up as if Harden County were paying for the plan. You don't have, I think it's more important, you certainly don't have as many claims, you don't see as many claims paid, it's much cheaper. So, where we are looking at premiums in the $30,000 range for short-term disability, long-term disability is just under $10,000, it's less than a third. And in my opinion, at least in what I've seen, I can tell you that in, in my almost 30 years in this business, fortunately, I haven't had it happen very many times, but when I have employers that don't have a long-term disability, and they have an employee that gets disabled, the first call the employer or I get is from the family asking, "How long are you going to continue paying the salary?" That's a very uncomfortable conversation. You don't, I don't get those as much on short-term type disabilities. You have a serious disability, and they know they're not going to be working for a while, maybe never again. To me, I think that's a bigger risk to protect, and I think it's a better investment personally than short-term. There's a lot of people that disagree with me, and it's just, and I don't think it's a right or wrong, that's just my view of it. And so, one of the options that could occur here, again, we should talk about that sick leave and PTO and accumulation, and what does that look like? And one of the options is, could be to provide the long-term disability, and then offer short-term on a voluntary basis that people could, each individual could look and say, "What's my situation? Is that a risk that I feel like I need to cover?" So there are a lot of ways to mix and match this in terms of if we want to do anything on that.
Could we look at a cost of the 90 days?
Yeah.
Would that fit right into what you were asking?
Yeah, okay. Yep, I will get that. My guess is, just roughly, it'll probably increase the rate. Probably 30%, maybe more. But I'll, I'll get that, I can get that turned around pretty quickly.
Okay.
Just what you're hoping to see?
How long are these good for?
Oh, these would be good for 60, maybe 90 days.
Okay.
They don't, they don't tend to change a lot with time.
I think you covered it pretty well.
Yeah.
Okay, get you what you wanted?
Yep, I think so.
Good.
All right. Well, thank you, Tom.
Yeah, so I'll leave one of these for CJ as well.
CJ, okay.
And then maybe I'll follow up and, and I'll get the night, I'll get the 90-day elimination.
Okay.
And then I'll follow up with you on that, and you can sit down and, maybe we'll have some other questions that come up.
Okay.
And I'm going to sit down with Tina for a little bit, so if something comes up and you need to see me, let me know.
All right.
Sounds good.
All right, great, thank you.
No, thank you.
Angela?
That was a tough act to follow. All right, so I'm here with Aerial Green Belt. What Aerial Green Belt is, is a drone contest competition, kind of pioneered by Wes last year, around the same time we were talking about all the marketing efforts that we had. Since then, it's kind of grown into, Mark Bushcamp's been a part of it, I've been a part of it, Brady from Hoff Productions, and Eldora Chambers has been part of it, and Kevin Butler from Ellsworth Community College has been part of it. What the goal first and foremost is, is to bring people to Harden County and see kind of what we have, utilize our amenities, those sort of things. The second-fold goal is obviously to get a lot of really cool footage of what Harden County is and what we have to offer here. So I do have a short little video that you guys can watch really quickly to kind of explain it more and see what the goal is. I'm sorry, my computer's dirty.
Will this be uploaded?
Aerial Green Belt is hosting an aerial visionary video competition targeting professional and artistic UAV pilots to capture the stunning beauty of the Iowa River Green Belt and the quality of life in Harden County, Iowa. Harden County Conservation has teamed with Iowa Falls Area Development Corporation, Actley Development Commission, Ellsworth Community College, and Hoff Productions to offer the entrance, $7,500 in cash prizes with six ways to win, and a chance to win a new drone, and a drawing open to all entrants. There is a $2,500 grand prize for the overall best footage, as well as a $1,000 prize winner for each of five categories, separating out the focus for all of Harden County into agriculture and industry, water sport, land sport, nature and scenic, towns and events. There is so much to offer in this unique and beautiful stretch of land, and what better way to capture its beauty but from above?
I got a chance to see this at the trail event down by Hy-Vee. That's what that was, wasn't it? Some of the drone footage?
No, that was actually separate, that was part of RDG's place-making.
Oh, all right, that's right.
Between the IRTHC here and March and...
But it would, it would probably be a lot of the same type of thing, they're going to video.
Be a lot of the same kind of aerial footage, yeah.
Yeah, that was pretty amazing.
Yeah, so we're actually going to kick off the contest with a informational meeting on Monday at Ellsworth Community College.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, yeah, it's coming up really quick. When we set the date, we were like, oh, that's a long time away, now we're like, that's Monday. So we're working on that, and that's going to run through November 15. So you kind of get the harvest in there, you can get a lot of the fall foliage and what have you within the Green Belt. So what we're here today is to ask for some funding. We think it'd be really, really cool to say that Harden County sponsored the grand prize, so we are asking for $2,500 out of the lost fund. so we are asking for $2,500 out of the lost fund. Speaking from the economic development standpoint, what better community development is this? You know, we were talking about marketing for a long time. We kind of drug our heels on it, and we weren't sure if we really wanted to spend $26,000. I think this is a very good alternative, and I think we're going to get better footage probably than what we would have gotten with the marketing. And it's really going to show what is unique about Harden County because we really wanted to focus on the Green Belt, which I know I've had conversations with both of you about, you know, what is unique about Harden County. So, that's what we're here for today. You can kind of see the different levels and see what being a Class A sponsor would bring you guys. So, we will hold a showing of the final, I think I said...
For the final...
Yeah, we're going to hold...
What we discussed was live voting at, hopefully, the Metropolitan Theater in Iowa Falls of the best, the top three submissions per category. And then, participants that fall under the sponsorship categories will have a vote that they can do right there on their cellphone during the showing. And then, we can announce the winner live right there. And have any prizes and checks and everything else.
What other questions do you have? I'm sure there's many because I did not do a good job of explaining it.
Angela. After all is done, who will have access to the imagery and photos produced from this?
Harden County, you know.
Will this become open domain totally, or will it be restricted to the people who contribute to the project, or how will that be determined?
The footage is going to be owned by Harden County. That's why we're involved. And we will be, once they enter the contest, it becomes a property of us.
So, by becoming a property of us, doesn't that kind of make it like an open record then?
Daryl.
It's going to be available of consumption.
Okay. Because then, I guess, as long as people understand, and I don't want my hands on it, so that sounds great to me, but that people, like, by participating in this, they do lose control of it.
Yes, I agree to that. Let me add to that.
Yeah, Daryl's done a great job of getting us a lot of legal documents, so we're good.
You know, it goes back to when we were doing the placemaking, and I think you suggested, Lance, it's like, instead of spending $26,000 to hire that company to do it, we have enough local talent in the area that we could harvest some of that local talent. So, that's kind of what spurred this all on.
Did everyone see the footage of the ice dam in Iowa Falls that was taken by the drone footage?
Yes.
That was just somebody who had a drone and just took it.
I believe the local people know more about what's going on here than we can hire a company in for you.
Right.
Exactly. That's what spurred the whole idea.
One of, I came in like a left blank and put red tape on everything because there are some laws involved with the FAA and how we can utilize footage. To commercially produce, you have to be able to provide a registration number to the drone that took the footage, as well as a pilot's license to the pilot that has the footage. So, a lot of times when you see great aerial footage, you know, played on Facebook or wherever else, unless that pilot is licensed, they cannot legally be, you know, commercializing any of that.
So, you tune down, Dave.
So, it's just, it's one of the barriers that we had to step across in order to even put this contest together. How can we do this and then legally use the footage later on? Because it's one thing to have a cache of great aerial footage.
True.
But I personally would like to commercialize this into a nationwide tourism campaign.
And there's nothing like this. Like, there's a bunch in Europe, but like, we've found nothing like this in America.
Really?
So, it's kind of a...
FAA standards are very strict in the United States, so I put a lot of research into how to pull this thing off. I did find several, it was in European and Asian countries, that kind of formed the structure of this. But to adopt it to the United States standards, I have found nothing to reference.
Well, thank you for your work on that.
Yeah, Brady's done an incredible job, really.
I think it sounds great.
I got a one question. I don't know if it can be answered right now. Can we use the lost funds for a cash prize? That's what you're asking, $2,500 cash prize? That'd be my only question I have. I'm assuming we can, but I don't...
I mean, it's for economic development use.
When you ask for that, that's what came across my mind, too, is, I don't know that we can earmark it for that, but we might be able to provide that money, you know, without earmarking it for prize money. So, we may have to just be careful how we...
So, we do have a larger budget than the $7,500, so I mean, if it just went to...
Yeah, if it just went to getting the project.
Just went to the contest, yeah.
Right.
We are, we are having people that are writing sponsorship checks, wrote that directly to the Harden County Conservation.
Yeah, it wouldn't go to us at all.
Okay.
The money would go to Conservation, and then the Conservation would allocate how it's used.
Okay.
So, the request is $2,500 from lost funds to go to Conservation.
Correct.
I don't have a problem with that, but does Conservation still fall under the same rules? Can you give a cash prize like that?
You know, we did the Harden Hill Run, and we went through all those obstacles with the Harden Hill Run, and we gave out prizes and awards for that. The Nature Center's been involved in a lot of fundraising, so we've done it quite a bit in the past, so...
Okay. I'll make a motion to give $2,500 to Conservation as an Aerial Green Belt funding request out of the lost funds.
Okay, I'll second it. Any other discussion?
Daryl, is that correct how I did that?
Does it, does it have, do we have to designate what fund it's coming out of?
Lost funds.
He said that it was the portion of lost funds that are even in the Belt, maybe.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's okay. I just...
Yeah, I mean, I know what he meant because the other lost funds are for roads and then also for rural services, but he's not tapping into those other...
The economic development and community, economic development, community betterment.
All right, that sounds better.
Can you say that again, to clarify?
So, local option sales tax comes in, and we divide it into basically three places now because we're after July 1. So, it goes to rural services, some for roads...
40% roads, 40% rural.
And then, some for economic development slash community betterment.
And then...
And he's made a motion to take it out of the economic development, community betterment portion of those funds.
And the other one's capital projects, 10% capital projects.
Yes. I forgot them.
Just getting those to 100%.
Thank you.
It was such a small chunk. It was easy to overlook.
Okay, any other discussion?
Thank you, and I think it's going to be pretty...
Me, too. Anxious to see the footage. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
Thanks for doing all that.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the resolution for quitclaim deed slash corrective deed, releasing the county's interest in real property, related to instrument number 2972 and instrument number 0094.
Daryl, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, give me a little background here. Basically, there's a piece of property that we no longer have an interest in, but there's a cloud on the title, and it's being transferred between two private folks at this point. Back in the 80s, some railroad property was abandoned. It became delinquent in taxes. The county acquired, purchased the property at the tax sale, and then, just a series of events, the property was conveyed by the county to one of, they're selling the property now, but our tax deed was recorded after that transfer. So, now, our tax deed appears as an event out of, sort of out of sequence, so to speak. And so, it's just, it's bubbled up in a title opinion as a cloud. So, we're just getting out of the way so these two folks can convey their property. And so, I'm asking the board here to adopt a resolution, and so...
Okay.
A move to approve the resolution for the quitclaim deed to clear title of real property by quitclaim deed.
I'll second it. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in, oh, excuse me, Nancy.
Nancy.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, appointment to Veterans Affairs Commission. I think there were three applicants for the vacancy on the board. Entertain a motion.
With only two of us here, do we want to make this motion, or do you want to table till three of us are here?
I don't have a problem doing that either, so...
Is there a rush to have...
There's no meeting coming up within the next week.
We came back yesterday.
Oh, okay. All right.
I've moved to table till all three board members are here next week.
All right. I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Sheriff's Monthly Report.
A move to approve the Sheriff's Monthly Report of June as presented.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Change of status for the IRVM department.
A move to approve the change of status for Hannah Smith. She has resigned, took full-time employment in Minnesota, effective 7/15 of 2019.
All right, I'll second it. Any discussion?
I wish her the best of luck.
Yes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, public comments.
Yes, one that I can share.
Okay.
I just wanted to update you guys...
Yes, would you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Please.
So, last time we were here, we talked about general surgery, and we've added two new providers that will be coming to our specialty clinic. So, Dr. Ahari and Dr. Splitgerber. They have held six clinics now in the last month, and that has been well-received by the community in greater Harden County. So, that's a win. The other thing is, we're continuing to push for connecting with our patients and their families through the patient portal and Facebook. We're constantly putting the latest and greatest initiatives out on Facebook. So, if you haven't liked us, please do so. It's very active. As well as the coffee shop, the Coffee Addict Corner with Coffee Addict, with the partnership with Coffee Addict, has become a hotspot within the hospital. So, it is open from 6:00 to 2:00, Monday through Friday. We have people stop in, even if they're not there to see a provider or have any services, just come and grab a cup of coffee. The fireplace can be relaxing to sit by. So, if you guys have any questions, or if there's any questions I can answer, I'd be happy to.
Okay. Are there any questions for? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Other business? Motion to adjourn?
Adjourn to recess. A move to recess.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.